Well, let's start with all the people that are here and go around. Do you want to go around again so that we can even start again?
Uh, yes, Richard Ireland Jr.
I'm Rebecca Ireland.
Okay, Rebecca's going to be on the board in my place after the election.
Hi, Carrie.
It's Carrie.
Hi, I'm Carrie.
Hi, Shirley.
Julie.
Oh, Julia Underwood. I thought, I, I don't know.
I don't.
Ken?
Ken Lask.
Ken Lask.
Ken Lask. Okay.
Pat Bonjour.
Nancy O'Toole.
And I'm Kathy LaCorte. My last meeting in 37 years.
That's serious.
A tear will be shed.
I think Shirley, I don't really know the number of years. You have to look it up. I have no idea what it is. But it has to be divisible by six.
Longer than Shirley.
Longer than Shirley. Has to be divisible by six, whatever it is.
Well, no, if it's 34, it's not longer than me.
Well, I think it is, but anyway, okay.
I think it is too, so it would be more than 37.
Let's start with the secretary's report. Did you read it?
Yeah, something missing.
Something missing?
Yeah. We had discussed, I guess it was with the, I don't remember talking about new part-time staff coming in. I do remember that part of the discussion was that because of the state budgetary issues, we had to be very careful with the amount of money that we had and how we were going to spend it and the fact that we should not be hiring any additional employees.
Okay.
I know I had, that's something I had said.
Right. Okay, well, that, yeah, so that has to be added in, Pat. Okay, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so you're saying that that has to be added in.
Right. And then the other question I have is, why is this an email? Why is this an email? Because in the past, we've always had our secretary's reports typed up. I'm not saying that Pat typed them up, but I'm assuming that.
Somebody on staff did, I don't know who.
Yeah, so why is this an email and not typed up?
Yes.
Regrettably during the meeting, the recorder stopped and I only captured a few minutes of the, of the meeting, so I wasn't able to transcribe. I lost the recording, so I wasn't able to transcribe the event. I wasn't able to do them in the style that I usually do.
So we're, we got an email from Pat that we're going to have as official minutes.
Yes, these are, I believe these are the ones that are accepted by the town.
Okay.
These particular ones.
But these will have to be amended then.
Staff members have been turning into the town?
I believe Carol Scultecki gets both.
I can only say historically, okay, what we've done is when we started doing the recording, then it was an outline, you know, and Ken's absolutely right, I remember that conversation too. But I would do the outline about staff acquisitions and then going through. And the actual recording was also given to the town. So between the two of them, that was what was typed up.
The recordings stay on the devices for six months. That's our, that's the only retention requirement. That's from the town clerk.
Yeah.
And then they're able to be deleted or overwritten or whatever. We're doing them digitally at the moment, so they're just put in the trash even, and they're, they can stay there even though they're not fully deleted, they're still accessible.
Yeah, you can still work them.
Whatever happened to the SCD thing, the tape recorder?
There was a small recorder unit. Yeah, there was a tape recorder unit. When I tried to charge it up, it was in December after the, when I started, it didn't work at all. Like it just seemed to, there were no, it had no functionality. So there were lots of other little tapes and stuff like that, but I thought this, you know, forgive me, but I thought that this must be, this might be a more efficient way. I do apologize again for the, for losing that particular recording.
So what do we have for recording the minutes now?
We have this digital one, the iPad, and I'm keeping a close eye on that. And I have another one, a backup one here that is ready to go, like if this one seems to stop or have any trouble.
So you put your water on top of your.
Well.
That's that little spot in the corner square.
Yeah, I don't want to, I didn't want to do a ring on the table either.
Okay, so is that the only correction?
Yeah.
Okay, and with that correction, I have a motion, please.
So?
Second.
Me.
The secretary will cast the vote. Treasurer's report? No, I don't want to get into the treasurer's.
So I was able to include a couple of mailings that were received about the Caler account and also the YHB accounts. Compared to the last, compared to July of 2017, the Caler account gained about $1,000. And between the three smaller funds that are administered by YHB, they lost about $1,000. And otherwise, the revenue side for the library is in good shape. The town is right on the money. They provided 25% to match the quarterly needs. One thing that's a little low is library fines. They're at 21 and 1/2%, a little lower than typically. But other than that, oh, and on the expenditure side, you'll see that the part-time line is a little high. That's in part from, in past months, we've had to do part-timers filling in for the full-timer who was out, is still on the mend and coming back, isn't, is being paid full-time but isn't able to work the evenings. But I can assure you that as time progresses, as months go on, that line will normalize.
How long has this employee been out now?
She's back. She has worked her way back.
It's been almost a year.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, it happened last winter.
Is there like a point at which it's maximum medical improvement and she just can't do the job?
Well, we're very happy to keep, to maintain the accommodation.
Yeah.
At this time, but of course, I would be, I'm open to any option that could.
Medical improvement would have to do with working as comp?
Right.
And she was not injured at the work as comp, but not at work as comp.
Right.
Is she on disability this time?
Yeah, she hurt herself, you know, home.
She was on disability then?
Uh, I'm not sure.
She was on unpaid leave for a while.
Yeah.
When she ran out of her time.
She had sick time accumulated, she used the sick time when she was out.
So now she's back to full-time.
She is, but she's not working nighttime hours.
That's just a validating situation.
Yeah, so she's working, but just, okay. My other question is, maybe it's time, I mean, why is, why are we down with the market?
I know. It was $1,000.
My first thought, and I haven't looked at the sheets yet, is, was any of that bonds as compared to stocks and which is where? Because obviously, usually when stocks do well, bonds don't. That's always the ying and the yang of where you're at. So I don't know the answer to that question.
The asset summary at the bottom? I mean, it only gives you a thumbnail.
Yeah, this is just thumbnail.
I do have all the backup in the office for whenever any, and all of you would like to review any, but I'm glad to accommodate.
Sounds like they should be answering the questions.
When did you stop using the Dropbox?
It's still active, as far as I know.
Okay, so why, so why are we sending financial information with account numbers through the email?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that was something that.
Well, I mean, you know, I know that I do not send account numbers to my clients, okay? I don't use the email that way. But the Dropbox in my, at least it's one degree of security. So my question is, why are we sending this information through the email?
Again, I apologize, I.
Well, I'm not looking for an apology, I'm asking why.
I wanted to keep the board aware of the financial situation of the treasurer.
You didn't want to use the Dropbox?
Mine didn't come on, I didn't get it.
Do you know how to use the Dropbox?
Yeah, this, this information is in the Dropbox.
Yeah, but it was sent to me by way of an email.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the Dropbox.
No, I'm talking about this was sent to me by way of an email. And I always thought that in the past, we would have the information that we, that was like our minutes, et cetera. This stuff would be put in the Dropbox primarily because of security.
I didn't get it.
Again, I apologize, you're.
Well, how often do you send this out?
Correct.
How often do you produce?
Monthly.
So you've been getting, you've been sending it out email monthly?
No. We've been getting Dropbox.
This is the first time?
My last eight, I have April as my last Dropbox.
Not, not the information from their, from YHB investors. You know, the financials come out and I think they're quarterly.
We don't obviously get them.
There are monthly statements in quarterly, right.
Right, so you produce to the, to the trustees this statement how often, quarterly?
No.
As often. I produce this as often as it comes out.
It would be quarterly.
There are quarterly statements and monthly.
So if you've been putting, I got, what I'm trying to get to is, the last time you had a quarterly statement, did you send it out by email or did you put it in the Dropbox?
I'd have to look, I don't remember off the top of my head.
What you're hearing is, you need to put it in Dropbox.
Dropbox instead of email, yes.
See, in the banking world that I deal with and the legal world.
I know, I think that's what he's saying.
Yes, sir.
For privacy security reasons.
I'm hoping to see. Are there any, are there any other questions regarding the treasurer's report? Do we have a motion?
Either that or call around.
Well, I think, oh, we need to know why we're down.
I think, I think the, I guess my, my question would have to be, at what point can we, I mean, obviously at this point, we're probably not going to see anybody, but can we request the folks to come back?
A meeting.
Come back, yeah, come back and speak with us because, you know, if the, I mean, the market has changed, probably, I think the last time we saw them was a year ago or longer.
Since the election, actually.
Was it?
Yes.
It's a year since we've seen them?
Yeah.
Then they have to go back.
So they need to come back because if the, if the allocations are off with the market that's changed, we should know these things, you know, or they, they should be keeping up on it because, I mean, granted, it's only 1,000 and, you know, the number, I mean, based on the dollar amounts, it's not a huge percent, but we never want to lose money. And if the allocation needs to be adjusted, we need their input as to where they think it needs to go.
Who makes the decision on where these investments are made?
The company.
The library, there are two main sources. One is called the Caler Fund.
But who makes the final decision on where things get invested?
Our investors.
So you don't have, so they just tell you when to invest?
No, we do agree to it.
We do, yeah, we have to agree.
We argue the last time.
I think, I think the, I think the actual answer to your question is, we do.
Yeah.
We ask them for their suggestions. We all sit here and shake our heads and think about it, and if it makes sense, we agree to it.
No, that's right.
That's what we pay them to be able to do.
But not on, that's only on why.
We're probably, you know, as smart together as the people you work with that make those decisions. You know, it's, we're not, we're local people. I'm trying to make that as easy as possible there, Rick.
Yeah, but Caler, we have no say on Caler.
No.
On the YHB, we have no say on Caler at all.
That was bequeathed and is, part of that is that it is managed by Wells Fargo.
And we have no say.
There are multiple smaller funds that are administered by YHB. They're out of West Hartford, YHB Investment Advisors.
Well, I would offer, if you wanted to take it, take up on others, to have another party take a look at these investments over the last year and, and look at them and tell you, and give you some advice as to whether they're bad or indifferent.
The problem is, we can't do anything about Caler.
You go to probate court, right?
That we have to go to probate court to change that. We have no, we have no say.
And Caler didn't lose.
Caler's made money in the last year, not a lot, but they've made money. Caler overall, if my recollection is correct, has done okay, you know. The multiple smaller funds, depending on, you know, it's more a question of where they're at. I think we'd be, we'd be remiss not to, we'd be remiss to say, gee, no thanks, you know.
I'll leave that to you.
If somebody wants to take a look at it and give us other thoughts, and then we could take those thoughts and.
The YHB one, yeah.
To YHB and say, hey, you know, and compare the two, or at least go into their meeting with the, you know, with our quiver full of what we, you know, what we need to discuss. You know, for the moment, that's still her decision.
But Caler, it's, it's all part of the will. We can't do anything with Caler.
Well, if they're being irresponsible, as Ken has suggested, the possibility, there's options you could take, but there's nothing to indicate they're being irresponsible.
No, they're not doing, no.
Do we wish they made a lot more money? Sure. The market's been very good, so, you know, they, they probably could have made more money, but I, I think, again, if I remember correctly, it's all a bunch of, well, it's all a number of little, and it's separated out into smaller, smaller amounts, so the question being is, is it, and I don't know the answer to this.
Are they fee-sixed or are they based upon performance?
We were upset with the fees.
We were, yeah.
And I think they lowered it because we were upset.
Yeah, it wasn't fixed. It wasn't fixed.
Yeah.
I think the problem is that the funds have been assigned to somebody that's just very good at high scores. Seriously.
Well, it's a small fund. It's a small fund.
Yeah, they're not giving it to somebody that.
Yeah, we're not getting a lot of attention.
For Wells Fargo, it's a small fund.
Probably use the big for the insurance carriers.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, do you want to have a meeting? You can schedule it, we can plan on.
Well, I think the problem suggests is having somebody look it over and then give us some time before we have a meeting. Whatever you want to share with me, that would be like an annual statement. I would take it, keep it confidential and share it with somebody who would maintain confidentiality as well.
How's that sound?
Whatever you want to send me, whatever you want to send me, fine. And I would get back to you in a relatively short period of time.
But you let us know when you share it, right?
Yeah. If you want to know what it is, I'll let you.
Cousin Bob.
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, all right. And so I still need a motion regarding the, okay, second. Second, I'm a favor. Test. Okay, there it is, I've got too much going on here. Librarians report, strategic plan initiative surveys.
Apologies for the somewhat abbreviated report. I tried to hit the highlights of the past month. Basically, I would love to have a strategic plan for the library as a structure within which the library, the board, myself can more easily make decisions and ensure progress and think about how we can improve services and the best way to, to try to get at that. We have a lot of, we have a lot of positive energy and a lot of positive things going on, a lot of talented people, and I just think, I think we can do a little bit better, even in times of shrinking resources and tighter budgets.
I just want to say one thing, though. I think you really brought up some wonderful programs to the library. You should be giving credit for that. I'm amazed how many different things you have going on, so.
Thank you.
I really want that on record.
And as usual, I welcome feedback on any kinds of programs that you might want to see or that we can try. It's been really encouraging to me to join some new people who see the wonderful resources and staff that we have here and get, get into library services. Statistically, some of these programs went really well, some not so much, but we're constantly looking to draw in these new people. Upcoming events, of course, being an October report, we had 30 people come to the program on October 4th, 16 at the book club the day before, which was a pretty high number. The movie this month is The Big Sick. We've got another great discussions, which seems to be getting some traction in the community. And Children's continues their really fantastic work. Lots of students reached, lots of pre-numeracy, pre-literacy activities going on. I know I say this a lot, but most communities don't have a library that gets out of the library and goes into the schools to do programming and introduce students to the library and to that welcoming kind of environment. And in other, just sort of larger news, the Friends of the Library held their book sale, semi-annual book sale, raised just over $1,000. Membership is at 173 members. The programs in support for the year are set for Friends programming, and of course, we're looking to add freebies or very cheap programs that draw in different sorts of crowds. Friends continue to be a wonderful supporting organization. Statistically, it's the very last page of that little report, some of the numbers are, they seem, it's, it's not a surprise to me, it's not a surprise to any of the librarians that I'm working with and in the rest of the consortia and the state. Our program attendance was very good, our meeting room use was very good, digital resources continue to be wonderful. All of those gains are generally offset by the circulation drops, and it's disheartening to me, but most of that unfortunately can be attributed to the problems with the statewide delivery system. If you look, there's a statistic called system holds, system holds received, that's about 250 circulations and that's about half of the total circulation drop. In essence, we're finding that. In essence, we're finding that.
That's good.
Folks are being, it's regrettable and we're doing everything we can to change this trend, but folks are sort of being trained to not request things because they think there's a large problem with the delivery system. So we're telling everybody and anybody, yes, request everything you want, we'll get it for you, if it exists, we'll find it. And please check out multiple titles, you know, if somebody's wondering which book they should take, I always encourage them to take both, take many books. But that's kind of the highlights of the report. I'm always glad to try to answer questions or address any concerns.
I have a question, if it's okay.
Sure.
I use the library a lot, I read a lot. I've noticed that online, you're only allowed to do so many holds, so you're limiting the amount of holds because of this. Is that, I mean, so I may ask for more books, and some of the books I might ask for are books that you can get fairly easily, like, you know, like, you know, if I can, if I can do eight holds, probably four of them are ones that are, that are put off the shelves as opposed to four brand-new ones that just came out, you know, last week that you have to wait your turn. So, so is there a reason why you're limited the holds? Because that would, that would cut down your circulation numbers, I would think. Is that what you're talking about?
In part, yes. There's a hold transportation issue. The, that was the case up to about 30 days ago. Now there are no hold limitations at all.
Oh, okay.
And again, we're trying to subtly brand the.
We're laying out a few books, by the way.
We're trying to not hit people over the head with it, with glaring or unsightly messages on the online card catalog, but we're, we're filling all the holds. In part because we've, the, and when I say we, I'm talking about library consortium, my, this library and the 29 other libraries in the LCI consortium have contracted with a private vendor. We're using a planned spend-down of LCI funds to get, to remove backlogs and also to deliver materials in a more timely manner than can the state library. So it's a very sad situation all the way around. We like to serve everybody in the best that we possibly can, but the landscape is changing very, very rapidly.
And if the state doesn't do something, it's going to get worse. Okay, under old business, library bills, is, we could have, we could have made that, okay. This is regarding the letters sent out for overdue books, so go ahead.
Last month, we discussed changing the, changing from the attorney's letter to a library-issued letter and/or email. So I sent two versions, they're identical except for the names. There was no, I don't remember any particular, I think the board was ambivalent, so I just included both to see what, or what you, which you wanted to pick or choose something else. And just because we didn't, I did do a very brief survey of, because we stopped sending those bills and I didn't have a new form, I wound up on the phone, trying to contact people on the phone for billed items, which, because I, I'm a person who tries to find the positive in things, it was kind of interesting to talk to the different kinds of people. Out of about 30 patrons, only two or three became resolved in any way, meaning they renewed or brought the materials back. Most are still outstanding, I try to check them as often as I can. The situation improves, it waxes and wanes, it's really just like, just like any other library, really.
Has this problem gotten worse in the last year or so in as far as property not coming back?
No, actually Plainville has one of the lowest theft and non-return items rates of LCI. In part, I think, I think because of the, the attorney's letter, the sort of strength of that, it, it seemed to work. But no, it hasn't changed all that too remarkably. Most of the time, people reach a, reach a stage where they can't use their library card anymore, and when they go to some library, one of the area libraries, they find their account is, is blocked and they're denied services, and that's when they decide to take care of things.
So the phone call and the old letter, those who were going to return, returned, and those who weren't going to return, didn't return. Letter, phone call, did they give any kind of, gee, I can't get out of the house, or they lost it?
A couple. One lady, one woman actually said, oh, I just had a new baby and I was so thrilled, I renewed everything for her. I mean, it was just really, like charming to talk to some of these people. Most of the time, it was, I had to leave a message in voicemail, they, you know, wouldn't answer, they didn't answer for whatever reason. And the few that I actually spoke to said, oh, I'll get those back right away, and then I would check and they have not, they didn't yet. And a few were not in service, this person isn't at this number, and there was a couple that were completely facetious, like a psychiatric center was one of them, I can't remember. It was, one of them was Middlesex Hospital. So I mean, obviously, that's not, either, you know, it could have been anything, it could have been the person saying, oh, yeah, that's my number, or we took it down wrong, or they, you know, we misinterpreted a scribble or something like that. We do go through, I have a lot of data cleaning projects for the staff that we go through and constantly make sure that the data is as fresh and clean as possible. We also don't retain any data that we don't have to for confidentiality of patron concerns. So if in the crazy event that some person gets access to it, they can't have to, they won't have access to information that isn't related to us anymore.
Okay, no, that's fine. Okay, if you've looked over these letters, do you have any preferences to which letter you prefer or how you prefer?
The one without the trustees on it.
Without, without the trustees on it, that's true. Yeah. Okay. Is that a, yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When do you consider, how long do you consider before you start saying this person needs to say reimburse the library?
A bill occurs at 42 days overdue. There are other reasons, there's a multitude of reasons.
So the bill goes out with the third letter?
Yeah, it's the third notice.
Okay, and 42 days is, is something that the trustees feels is a, is a reasonable timetable for sending somebody a bill for not returning something?
It has been.
I think that, I mean, if you take into account the fact that the, the book is out for three weeks as it is, so you're, you're 60-plus days out, you know, anyways, you know.
And that's two months.
I mean, I know, I know my son reads books like they're going out of style, but the average person is still going to read a book and finish it in, you know, a month and a half.
I'm just asking you to defend.
No, 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 but.
Yes, that would be fine, I'm not going to give up.
I think longer than that, it would disappear, you know, people couldn't find it.
Right.
And so how many people do you, how many people do you have that, that are 42 days out, generally?
Folks with billed items.
Yeah, I guess that would be billed items, yeah.
Items do get billed for other reasons from time to time, like a destroyed item or whatever, there's a lot of different permutations. Sheer numbers, I could find it for you relatively quickly, but I would say. It's more like a thousand.
Thousand?
Yeah, that would be, remember, we share a patron database and item database with bibliographic database with thirty other libraries, we're talking about millions of people.
No, what I'm saying, stuff that came from Plainville.
Plainville items.
Over a thousand?
I'm guessing, six hundred, a thousand?
So those are the phone calls you're making, the six hundred people?
No, these, those are just, no, those were just new bills that were generated in that timeframe, so I did three weeks' worth of bills. It was about eighteen, eighteen to twenty.
The newest.
Yes. Bills generated.
Okay. If, you know, some people maybe move out of town.
Yes.
You know, those kinds of things, they're renters and they're gone, or whatever, some of them are probably out of town to begin with.
Yep.
But for the ones that are in Plainville, you know, my, my staff could assist you in, in making sure that the database is, is up to speed.
Okay, I would like to, you know.
We can find phone numbers of people pretty easily.
Okay, I do have.
And not necessarily take what they tell us their phone number.
Sort, yeah, a sort of, I have thoughts on what we might be able to do, so I would very much welcome that. I mean, really, I, I don't want to say we're not about the money, but we're not about the money, we just want the materials back. That's my first multimillion-dollar collection up there, so that's the, we really just want the stuff back.
But the idea is, once, once, once they're out forty-two days, their card will not allow them to, to get another book somewhere, anywhere in the consortium.
Correct, they can go out of the consortium, sorry.
That's like DMV, you know, you can't reuse your automobile without that, so that is a self, you know, that helps, I'm sure.
You know, it, it is kind of, I don't want to say, it works in many, it works effectively most of the time.
As long as you notify.
Well, of course, but the, we find a lot of folks who, you know, it, it's the mom, the busy mom of three kids who takes out twenty books from like, you know, their little easy readers, they cost five dollars apiece or something like that. That's not something that we would ordinarily even be too terribly concerned with, because we want this, this patron to come back and keep checking out books and keep doing the numer, the literacy efforts with their, you know, do the family literacy. So we'll try to, we work like crazy with people to try to, to not let them get to that point. But, of course, you know, just, it's the cost of doing business in a library.
I, I didn't read the letters that were proposed, but.
Same letter, same letter with different headings.
I would, I would suggest that you, you add a sentence or two in here that talks about the impact of them not returning, the fact that other people do not have access to these materials or cannot borrow them, you know, you know, and not available to them, so you're, you're appealing to the fact that, you know, that, uh, you know, not only do you always the book back, but there's other people who want to use this material that now can't use it because you haven't returned it.
Have you been on the Plainville Talks lately? They don't care.
I think, I think it is important for some people.
It might intervene in some people.
Because, you know.
No, I, I agree with you that, you know, there, there's two sides of that, and I'm gonna play both sides. One, one is, I agree with that, that trying to get to their sensitive side, if you will, and say, hey, listen, you've got it, she can't type, is a wonderful, you know, is, to some people, that's gonna matter. The rest of the people, if they haven't returned it in forty-two days, sixty days, they don't really, they don't really care.
It's more than forty-two days, because we've already done the three weeks, so.
He's right, that's a nice sentence.
And I think you should al, I think you should also put in here that if you do not return, on the final bill, if you do not return this, you know, you're gonna go on the list, that's not gonna allow you to, to, to take out books, you know, you know, what the impact is, which is, you know, you're gonna be blackballed, and you're not gonna be able to, you know, take, not only out of our, and I don't think it should be, you know, that.
Gotta work, you know, gotta, gotta watch the language.
But that, but that the result is that you're not gonna be able to borrow books not only from Plainville Library if you don't return this, or you're not gonna be able to borrow from, from twenty, twenty-nine other libraries.
Right.
So I think you, you should let them know that, they may not care either, but, you know.
Like I said, there, there's a certain part of the clientele, the, the local citizenry who will agree with, with that, and will, that may cause them to go look underneath the end table in the, in the living room and find the book. There's another, you know, and, and I only say that, and you, you're, on, on Plainville Talks enough, you understand, there's a whole bunch of people out there who just don't care, you know.
But they, but they came to the library to begin with, so they had a reason to show up, so, you know, there, there is some sort of mental thing there.
And Doug and I had, had spoken about this a while ago, and, you know, when, when we first had the issue, because that woman did contact me as well, you know, and we had a long conversation and, and, you know. And I volunteered to, to draft up a couple of letters, and, and I never did it. And Doug, you know, and Doug, you know, did it, and he presented it to you and that kind of stuff, but, otherwise, I probably would've added some of those things up. I'm just suggesting, and I could work with Doug.
It sounds a little stronger.
Or just, just, just kind of a wild hair that, that hit me, would it make any sense for us to put something in the paper like that?
No, oh, you mean put a notice in that?
No, just a, a.
Not a list of names?
Just a column in the, in the paper, the story that you do that says, hey, listen, we, we'd like, you know, not threatening it, but just something that, that gets that idea.
The list of names?
No, 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 no.
Something like, did you know if you don't return your book?
Yeah, just, just kind of a general news-type item, you know, I don't know whether, you know, again, it was just something that, that.
Encourages people to return their books.
When is National Library Week?
Isn't this, I thought it was October, November, April?
Is it April?
Spring.
National Library Week?
Because I'm thinking that's the perfect time, it's fine free, and it's the perfect time to say the impact of not returning books is. But isn't, you do the Christmas thing too, where we let them, they bring a can for.
Yeah, we do fine free whenever we want.
So if you could make that part of the, but it doesn't sound threatening, it's like, you know, it's.
We're having fine free week, most important thing is the materials be returned, and the impact of not returning your materials is. You can't, you can't borrow any wrong.
If I may, I would like to pick up on that, to appeal, to do a fine free week or a more, a positive spin, the library's great, all the great things about the library, if you have any stuff, please feel free to bring it back, we'll work with you on fines, or if it's a fine free week, we can put that in in addition to all the great stuff about the library.
Oh yeah, I didn't mean, it's, it's fine free, bring your stuff back, I just meant, you know. It's kind of a softer way to let people know.
Okay, do we, go ahead.
With your permission, I'll put in a couple of sentences about this prevents these materials from going to other users, bear this in mind, and services at this point, services at this point are regrettably denied.
Can hold it over till next month, till it's completed and then, then agreed to?
Again, but with your permission, the, the making of the phone calls took quite a long time, so.
It's not the best use of time.
If, if at all possible, if you could preliminarily approve.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking perhaps if you could consider. We could use whatever letter, you know, this letter here with a couple of additions, and I could bring it back to you next month to make sure, or.
Or put it out to us in the email?
Yes, I can, I'm glad to do that.
Yeah, I, I think if you're, if you're looking at adding, I mean, the letters themselves are fine, you know, for what you're using, but I, I agree with the Mr. Lee that by adding a couple of lines in there, and I think if you could do that and put it out to us in the email, you know, this week, I'm sure that we can back and forth and make a decision on, on whether or not that, that works.
Yes, no?
I have no problem with approving it.
Okay.
For his sake right now, talking along, and then he can send us an email.
Then make a motion, and then, make a motion, and then we can go through with it that way, if you want.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we give him temporary approval for the letter without the Board of Directors, and he can add a couple of lines, that he'll send us an email, but meanwhile, he can use it instead of wasting his time calling these people. That's my motion, is that good?
Seconded.
Any more discussion? All in favor, okay. Okay, December meeting with the Town Council.
So actually, the next three.
Advocacy efforts.
Oh, advocacy efforts, I'm sorry, go on ahead.
These were just things that, I think they were issues that the board discussed last time, and I'm ready to help with.
Okay.
But I believe it was just unfinished business or old business, so I just wanted to know how I could be of service. What sorts of things can I do to help?
I'm lost.
Thank you.
So in the last meeting, the September meeting, it was brought up.
Is it in the secretary report? I just have to remind you a little bit.
Yeah, it was a month ago.
Advocacy, I'm sorry, it's like page two of that, of those notes, advocacy must be continued to protect library funding.
That's part of the meeting with the Town Council.
Oh, 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 that's what that, okay.
So I just wanted to, I, I assumed you wanted to keep talking about them, so apologies if you didn't.
Advocacy was the meetings, was, isn't that what?
Right, that was, that was the idea of us getting together with the, both the, with the Town Council.
And the Board of Ed.
And the Board of Ed, and over the next couple of months, as we're heading into budget season.
And then we'll, yeah, and then we'll people.
To make sure that we're, you know, everyone understands what our importance in town is, okay, with the, with the Board of, sorry, with the Town Council and so on, you know, and like we did, what, a year ago, two years ago, when we met with them, and, you know, to say, here's where we're at, you know, bringing them, so I guess the, the thought being, it's a, what you, what you do to help, heading into the, especially the Town Council meeting, as you're working towards, you know, slowly working towards your budget for next year, is, you know, letting them know where we're at, the monies that we're spending and what we're doing in town, like you do with us every, every month here, you know, so that they'll have the same information that we have, you know, and, you know, with the Board of Education, obviously, that's, you know, trying to reiterate to them why they need to use us more than not.
So are you saying that you haven't set up these meetings?
I have not, this, this, these were discussed by the board, but I didn't have any.
Didn't have any what?
Direction, or I didn't have any communication about what you wanted to do, so that's why I put them in.
It probably would help you to delegate it, and you can delegate it after this meeting, give it to one of your, your assistant director, and just say, we need a meeting with us and the Town Council, with us and the Board of Education. And one of them, if I remember, didn't have a staff, we invited some of the staff here too.
That was the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
The general idea of the December meeting with the Town Council is, you know, we're waiting till after, after the election so we know who we're dealing with, okay? And before they get, you know, before the holidays, and they, they get head over heels into, into budget season.
So how would, how would you like to do that, would you like to do it in a work, work session fashion, which would be before a council meeting, to come in for a half hour and say, hey, this is, this is what's happened in the last year, this is where we see us going, this is.
Did you remember how we did it last time?
We had it.
Basically, what we did was, we were open, we were in the auditorium, and the first meeting we had was with the Town Council. And we, it literally took about an hour and a half, because.
I think they went to their meeting after ten.
No, no, but we, we had a meeting here.
We had it here.
It was a while ago.
But then they went to their meeting.
We had a meeting here, and then we explained what was going on, and one of the things that we showed them is we had a lot of adults coming in here, looking for jobs. And then, what the library can do, how it services the community, as opposed to just little kids, okay? Then we, we, the next year, we had a meeting with the Board of Education. And we were able to resolve a whole bunch of things, for instance, Jeff Kitchens, when he found out that only Lyndon was coming here with her kids, he directed all the other grammar schools to come here, because they didn't want to use buses, so to speak. We found out that there was a different kind of system that the Plainville Public Education Libraries had, and we couldn't figure out, and Peter couldn't figure out why people were coming in and looking for this particular kind of book in this kind of section. And we realized that they had good students according to certain things, so we, we ended up talking to the, we, we got a better idea of what they needed, and they got a better idea of what we could offer them.
They even talked about the digital divide, which we all learned about, and it was one of your staff members who talked about it.
Can you turn that off?
Yes, I just did.
No, no, off.
Because you weren't there, and most of us were, including your assistant here, that may help you.
Right, I didn't, I, I guess that was during Peter's time, so.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, it's been a few years.
Yeah, we certainly could set up a, a time when the council could come over and, and meet, it, it's less likely to get the full council than it is at before council, that doesn't mean we can't do it, I'm.
Right, well, I think last, last time we did it, we had, easily had three-quarters of them that came over.
I think we had the whole council here.
Yeah, we had the whole council, I think we had, it was around five, and I think some, we ordered pizza for them and a salad.
And then they left for their meeting, we didn't have their meeting.
So it was before a council meeting, but it was at five here, okay, yeah.
And we had a dog, basically, it was a dog and pony show with, with the screen and all that other happy garbage.
Let me just look at, let's set up a date now, how's that?
Yeah.
What was nice about that, Doug, is these people were out that night anyway, and they were gonna eat when they got here, so.
I assume, I assume they're going to have a, a meeting in December.
December fourth, first Monday in December, sometimes they cancel the second one, which is the eighteenth, they may not this year, but December fourth, we could set it up for five o'clock here, especially if you're providing pizza and a salad.
We will.
Five o'clock. And all announced at the council meeting next week?
And mandatory.
Well, I don't tell them what to do, believe it or not, they actually tell me what to do, it's hard to believe.
So it sounds like it worked great in the past, please feel, read it.
And we'll look up that format, you know, maybe we can get, you know, look up the agenda, or at least whatever format.
Right. Did you have your, like you said, it was, I remember the.
There was a, yeah.
Child, the children's director talked, and I remember the reference person talked a little bit, and things like that.
Well, I know you used to do your annual goals and that kind of thing.
It was very similar. It was similar to that.
It was directly toward that.
Okay.
And I think, if I remember clearly, didn't we do the same thing with the Board of Ed?
Yes, we did.
The meeting of their meeting and we made before, but we just did it the following month.
Yeah.
Do you know when the Board of Ed is?
Well, we did it, we did, no, we're gonna have to talk, you're gonna have to talk to the superintendent of school.
We have to talk to Ms. Brummett.
They'd be the second Monday of the month, so, so it could be the, you know, the eleventh.
No, whatever that day is, if it's not a regular meeting, it's gonna have to be a special meeting. It's gonna have to be called as such.
Right, for us.
Of the Board of Trustees.
For us.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Because it won't be.
Counselors just come and listen, they, they don't have to.
Is it, is it a special meeting, or is it?
No, it's a special meeting.
Because it's not a normal, regular.
Because the public can attend that as well, there's a meeting, there's a public.
So this will be in place of the December meeting?
No.
No.
No, no, it's just an extra, we do.
It's just an extra meeting.
Yeah, we're just trying to make it so that all of them will show up more easily.
Right. Question is, at this point, is on December fourth, I'm assuming the life, the meeting room here is open.
We can make it happen.
That's what, it's now, okay, that's.
If it isn't, just let us, try to work something else out, but.
No, we'll make it happen.
And then, that would also have to be done with the Board of Ed, but that would be a whole other.
Being it's December and the Christmas season, do we want to do theirs in December, or do we want to push that off until January?
We have January down.
January year, he had just mentioned that they'd meet the second, it'd be in the second Monday, but I, it just makes sense for us to.
Because it's different information.
Give her the option before December eleventh or January, you know, I think the first is on a Monday this year.
All right, one other thing under old business, are we all set with that?
Yes.
We know what we're doing, okay. If you remember, not too long ago, someone came in here and they wanted to sell, what, tickets for, oh no, you wanted.
Chess tournament.
Chess tournament, yes, that's right, you want to sell tickets for chess tournament, and we said that you couldn't do that. And I, I think this is different, but I need you're okay. The Senior Center has requested permission to sell raffle tickets at the libraries for their quilt, and it proceeds go to the senior, it's for, well, yeah, they make the quilt. And the proceeds would go to Senior Center Dial-A-Ride Service, does anybody have a problem with them selling tickets?
Does it open it up to something else?
Well, it's within the town.
I'm, I'm just asking.
That's why I'm asking you if you have a problem with that.
It doesn't bother me, it's helping wrinkles, sir.
To be part of it, you can say it, okay? Yes, he is, okay. Yeah, he is. Okay, but, so, do I have a problem with that, is there anybody has a problem?
No.
I don't, they've done it consistently.
I don't, they've done it consistently.
They've done it consistently, okay, thank you.
Do you need just a yes or?
Well, they just- I don't know that we need a-
Okay.
I don't know that we need a motion on that.
I think we do it every year.
Yeah, I think they do it, yeah. Yeah, and I don't think it's an exception because it's not really profit.
And we also sow the flowers for the better days.
That's right.
But through the friends, yeah.
Yeah, that's through the friends, but that's selling in the library, so that's-
The friends, the selling in the library by the friends is actually covered in the meeting room use policy because the funds go to the library.
Okay. Okay, new business. New business is executive session, so that would just be the Board of Directors and Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager. So, we will close off-
The young ones have to leave.
Oh, that's right. You're both have to leave. You both have to leave.
Well, it's because they're going to executive session. Talk about a personal-
And you'll be a board member next month, so you can stay first.
Next month, you stay for everything, but we don't let you out.
Very nice to see you again. Aren't they beautiful?
Thank you.
Doug, you're going as well.
I am?
Yep.
The board?